First order of business is to move the legislative.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item is the roll call, but before we do that, Councilor Donovan will not be here this evening. He let us know a bit ago, so with that, Tony, the roll call.
Councilor Cludia.
Here.
Councilor Johnson.
Here.
Councilor Foley.
Here.
Councilor Katerina.
Here.
Councilor Hamel.
Here.
Chairman Hayes.
Here.
And then moving right into the agenda, the order number nineteen oh seventy-six is an act on the request for executive sessions pursuant to Title IX, NRS A four oh five six. And consultation with legal counsel regarding the Walmart and Sam's point of view regarding Baker's case. So we will break to go into executive sessions and be back here at seven o'clock. So we apologize, but we will be reconvening in the conference room and be back at seven. So with that, we will turn to the legislative.
Motion.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Just coming down, I think it's my last one, but it's longer than I thought.
You say it's my last one?
Thank you. No, just coming down, I think it's my last one, but it's longer than I thought. Thank you. It's my last one. No, it's my last one. No. 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 It's my last one.[773.88]
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. We had started the meeting at six and we had adjourned into executive session and we are now returning. And so we are now on agenda item number four, which is general public comments. So at this time, anybody that would like to make public comments about things that are not on the agenda this evening are welcome to do so at this time. I think we have a candidate already that would like to. Sorry.
So, good evening. I'm Robert Rowan. I live on Bonny Grove Drive. And I'm a candidate for town council. Many of you know me as Will, which comes from my middle name. But my legal name is what has to be on the ballot. So for the next three weeks, I'm introducing myself as Robert Rowan. I really have been struggling with the precedent that's been set over the last couple of years that has candidates for office rise during open comment and make a campaign speech. One of my opponents came to a recent meeting and did a really nice job. And many people have encouraged me to come and take advantage of the same opportunity. But last year, when I was on the council and I was running for reelection, I had two of my opponents make a similar speech and they did a nice job and were obviously very successful. But at the time, I felt greatly disadvantaged by the explicit policies that prevent sitting councillors from making similar comments from the council rostrum, as well as just by general decorum as a town councillor. I don't know if councillor Donovan has made any comments about his reelection bid in these chambers. I know that I didn't last year and I suspect that he hasn't. But I do know that for the past six years, I have watched Bill tackle every controversial issue that our town has faced. And he's handled them all with great skill and knowledge and hard work and tact. His first act on the council was to broker the compromise that resolved the dogs on the beach conflict. And that was six years ago and that compromise has still held. And we've all seen him continue to run headfirst into every fire ever since. As a retired municipal lawyer, Bill is a tireless asset to this town. He's incredibly intelligent, reasonable, knows the rules, and can guide people to palatable conclusions and compromise. He's an invaluable sounding board for the other council members and for the town manager. I share many of councillor Donovan's values and affinities, such as a commitment to low and predictable tax rates, affordable housing options, and the preservation of our historic and natural resources. I'll be voting for him for a third term because I want Scarborough to be represented by level-headed, data-minded leaders like councillor Donovan, who are willing to listen to constituents, to council colleagues, to municipal and school staff, and to students. Leaders who will seek to find balanced solutions through compromise and will ensure that this town remains an exceptional place to live and to work and to learn and do business and retire. Thank you.
Anybody else like to join us this evening?
Good evening. Chairman Hayes, I'm Brian Shemway. I live at Five Memory Lane. I see on the agenda tonight you'll be talking about the change in schedule of fees pertaining to the in-lu fee for affordable housing. And I see it's the second reading and I'd really like to encourage you to pass the motion. It will give us many more resources to preserve and create much-needed affordable housing in town. And it is unanimously supported by the Scarborough Housing Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Paula O'Brien, Pondview Drive. I take no pleasure in reading this statement and really wish that I didn't feel the need to, but... "In this day and age, social media is used for many things, some good and some not-so-good. I, like most, believe in the right to free speech even in those not-so-good things some have to say. In the past couple of years during election time, I've received many screenshots of some of those not-so-good things people in groups and on their own have had to say. I don't know why they send them to me, but they do. I've never spoke up about them until now."
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. We had started the meeting at six and we had adjourned into executive session and we are now returning. And so we are now on agenda item number four, which is general public comments. So at this time, anybody that would like to make public comments about things that are not on the agenda this evening are welcome to do so at this time. I think we have a candidate already that would like to. Sorry.
So, good evening. I'm Robert Rowan. I live on Bonny Grove Drive. And I'm a candidate for town council. Many of you know me as Will, which comes from my middle name. But my legal name is what has to be on the ballot. So for the next three weeks, I'm introducing myself as Robert Rowan. I really have been struggling with the precedent that's been set over the last couple of years that has candidates for office rise during open comment and make a campaign speech. One of my opponents came to a recent meeting and did a really nice job. And many people have encouraged me to come and take advantage of the same opportunity. But last year, when I was on the council and I was running for reelection, I had two of my opponents make a similar speech and they did a nice job and were obviously very successful. But at the time, I felt greatly disadvantaged by the explicit policies that prevent sitting councillors from making similar comments from the council rostrum, as well as just by general decorum as a town councillor. I don't know if councillor Donovan has made any comments about his reelection bid in these chambers. I know that I didn't last year and I suspect that he hasn't. But I do know that for the past six years, I have watched Bill tackle every controversial issue that our town has faced. And he's handled them all with great skill and knowledge and hard work and tact. His first act on the council was to broker the compromise that resolved the Dogs on the Beach conflict. And that was six years ago and that compromise has still held. And we've all seen him continue to run headfirst into every fire ever since. As a retired municipal lawyer, Bill is a tireless asset to this town. He's incredibly intelligent, reasonable, knows the rules, and can guide people to palatable conclusions and compromise. He's an invaluable sounding board for the other council members and for the town manager. I share many of councillor Donovan's values and affinities, such as a commitment to low and predictable tax rates, affordable housing options, and the preservation of our historic and natural resources. I'll be voting for him for a third term because I want Scarborough to be represented by level-headed, data-minded leaders like councillor Donovan, who are willing to listen to constituents, to council colleagues, to municipal and school staff, and to students. Leaders who will seek to find balanced solutions through compromise and will ensure that this town remains an exceptional place to live and to work and to learn and do business and retire. Thank you.
Anybody else like to join us this evening?
Good evening. Chairman Hayes, I'm Brian Schumway. I live at Five Memory Lane. I see on the agenda tonight you'll be talking about the change in schedule of fees pertaining to the in-lu fee for affordable housing. And I see it's the second reading and I'd really like to encourage you to pass the motion. It will give us many more resources to preserve and create much-needed affordable housing in town. And it is unanimously supported by the Scarborough Housing Alliance. Thank you.
Good evening. Paula O'Brien, Pondview Drive. I take no pleasure in reading this statement and really wished that I didn't feel the need to, but... "In this day and age, social media is used for many things, some good and some not-so-good. I, like most, believe in the right to free speech even in those not-so-good things some have to say. In the past couple of years during election time, I've received many screenshots of some of those not-so-good things people in groups and on their own have had to say. I don't know why they send them to me, but they do. I've never spoke up about them until now. Recently, a couple of these screenshots sent to me involved failed attempts to dig up dirt on a candidate running a respectful campaign for a seat on the next town council. I have no problem with freedom of speech regarding any sitting town councillor endorsing or saying to vote for a particular candidate of their choice. That's their right, just like anyone else's. I, and many others from various groups, do however, find it problematic when a sitting town councillor or representative of our town makes derogatory bitter remarks about a candidate, any candidate, on social media. Councillor page or personal page doesn't make it right. It's extremely distasteful to malign and post things on said social media such as repugnant and she's a piece of work, among other things, from a sitting town councillor when referring to a candidate running for town council. Ironically, this same town councillor during her campaign put out a video stating that she did not want to accept endorsements from certain groups because she didn't want to add to any divisiveness in town. This hateful immature behavior does just that. Most adults, teachers, and parents would not condone this type of demeaning bullying behavior should our children be doing it, and we shouldn't condone it or add to it for a sitting town councillor either. It's wrong. I believe that when someone is a representative on the town council, it should be an honor and a privilege to represent all of your constituents in a tasteful, non-embarrassing, and respectful manner. This is Scarborough, and I hope moving forward, whether a town councillor likes someone or not, agrees with them or not, our representatives can agree to disagree respectfully on social media and treat others the way they want to be treated." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to join us this evening? Okay, closing general public comments. Next item on the agenda is item number five, the minutes from October 2nd, which is our regular town council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, changes, edits? Seeing none, everybody in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you.
Just to point a order. It wasn't yours, so I didn't vote. So the vote would not be unanimous. Sorry.
My bad. Sorry about that. Item number six is adjustments to the agenda and we will have an adjustment this evening in kind of in spirit of someone that we are going to have help us kind of get through an item. So with that, is there a motion to adjust the agenda?
Motion to adjust the agenda such that order number 19-079 gets moved to the beginning of the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, this time, okay, Don, I got that. A little slow, but I got it. Item number seven is items to be signed, the treasuries warrants. I have signed those. So at this point, we will move to the agenda and actually, we will now move to order number 19079, an act to approve and authorize the town manager to sign the property tax abatement, settle loan agreements with Walmart Real Estate Business Trust and Sam's Real Estate Business Trust. And Tom, I'll let you kick it off and then introduce our town attorney that will help walk us through that process.
For the purpose of disclosure, the council met an executive session around this very matter. We have legal counsel with us this evening. Jim Katsifakis is here and I think we'd like to introduce the matter for council and for the public's benefit. So if it pleases you, Jim would like to introduce it.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Jim Katsifakis. I'm an attorney at Perkins Thompson in Portland and representing the town of Scarborough in this matter. Walmart and Sam's Club have filed property tax abatements, requests for 2017-2018 taxes and 2018-2019 taxes. Both were denied by the town's assessor. The first matter has been to the Board of Assessment Review here in town where their appeal was denied and it's now before the State Board of Property Tax Review. The second is currently before the Board of Assessment Review locally. These matters can take years to litigate. There are additional costs. Additional appeals can be filed in the interim. Attorney's costs and expert fees and costs can mount and there's always the risk that at the end you may be ordered to pay an abatement with interest. The State Board requires mediation and through that, the town has been working with Walmart and with Sam's Club's representatives to discuss a potential negotiated settlement, one that would provide for an extended period of time of certainty so that there's both security for the town and for the parties that the tax levels will remain the same, the assessments will remain the same. There's certainty on the other side as to what their obligations will be. We discussed the potential elements of a multi-year settlement that would provide for security and for certainty for both parties. And the council has provided me with parameters for such a settlement. I will attempt to conclude a settlement within the range of those parameters. I hope to come back with a written settlement that the town manager could enter into that would meet those requirements that were set out by the council. So this motion simply authorizes the town manager to sign that settlement agreement, assuming that I'm successful in going back and satisfying the council with regard to those parameters that it's told me is most important with regard to these matters.
Thank you. Does any of the town council members have any questions? Would anybody in the audience like to comment on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve this action? Is there a second? Any discussion, comments? Councillor Caterina?
I just want to put it on the public record that I'm really disappointed in the big corporate entities who can hire all the big lawyers and bring in the big guns and try to get abatements when smaller businesses can't afford to do that. And that's all I wanted to put on the record.
Yes. Good point. Anybody else would like to? Councillor Fuller?
I only have two meetings left and I might as well put my two cents in there. I agree 100% with councillor Caterina and am frustrated that this is on our table. I'm going to support it because I think it's probably our best bet at this point, but it's frustrating.
Anyone else? Any other comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. We will now revert back to the agenda as written. So we're now on order number 19074, a public hearing in second reading on their proposed amendments to chapter 1301, the general assistance ordinance pursuant to title 22 MRSA 43054. Tom, you want to kind of? We've had this before in front of us.
We have. This is an annual process. This is us bringing our local ordinance up to reflect the state standards for general assistance. This is a matter we don't have any control over locally, but it does require affirmative action on the part of the local legislative body each year. So you can certainly discuss them, but I would respectfully suggest that you can't change those.
Would anybody like to comment on this particular order number? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Seeing that we can't change anything, it's kind of mandated. It's a quick item. All those in favor? So I think we're unanimous on that.
Check with councillor Henry.
And I'm going to actually turn this next item. I am going to probably not do this very well, so I'm looking for some assistance. This is an act on the request. This is brought forth by councillor Fuller on request for the proclamation, sorry, for declaring the month October as, how do you pronounce that?
I'm going to stumble through it with my part as well, but disautonomia. Disautonomia. Okay, I got a thumbs up.
Awareness Month. So with that, John, maybe you can bring us up to speed and tell us that this was yours and you brought it forth and you wanted to lobby on your behalf. So we'd love to hear this story.
I did, and actually, I'm pleased to do so. And I'm somewhat proud that this is proclamation 19-001, which means it's the first one that we've had this year. And I'm not aware of any that we've had in the recent past anyways. Give you a little background, in July, I run a business in Old Orchard. I was asked to participate in sponsoring a Maine-themed basket to be included in a silent auction that was happening at the Philadelphia Conference of Disautonomia International. I agreed, but I have to admit that I didn't really know how to say the word and I didn't really know anything about the disorder. But I will say that while I still have trouble pronouncing disautonomia, I've been inspired by some of our residents here who have led the effort in Maine to help spread awareness for the surprisingly common disorder that impacts an estimated 70 million people worldwide. Disautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, background, including many individuals living in Maine, and it can be very disabling. Some forms of disautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. Increased awareness about this disorder will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with it in the community. I was honored to be approached about bringing this item forward to the town council so that in proclaiming October as Disautonomia Awareness Month, we can show our support for these patients, their families, and the medical community in their search for a cure. I'd like to invite one of our residents, Colleen Ammon, who is chair of the Maine Chapter and I believe one of the founders of Disautonomia International. And I'd like her to share a little bit more about the disorder and how it's impacted her family.
Thanks, John. As John said, my name is Colleen Ammon. I live at 42 Clearwater Drive here in Scarborough. My 18-year-old daughter Molly, a sophomore nursing student at St. Anselm's College, has autoimmune disautonomia. She couldn't be here tonight because she has class. Disautonomia is an umbrella term used to describe various conditions that cause a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system. The autonomic nervous system controls most of the essential functions of the body that we do not consciously think about, such as heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, dilation, and constriction of the pupils of the eye, and temperature control. Molly's presents as POTS, small fiber neuropathy, temperature dysregulation, dizziness, chronic daily headaches, and digestive issues. Our journey began in September 2013 when Molly came down with a mono-like virus. She was not quite 13 and in eighth grade. The virus lingered and she presented with unbearable headaches. She saw six different medical professionals and never returned to school that academic year because the head pain and fatigue she was experiencing were unbearable. She never really had a formal diagnosis, just lingering virus. She was sent to the Boston Children's Hospital Headache Clinic in the spring of 2014. Things stabilized and Molly returned to school in the fall to start her freshman year at Scarborough High School. She was never symptom-free and unfortunately, new symptoms came on in December. She was getting dizzy and passing out. Molly saw several more new medical professionals, including a cardiologist, and she received the diagnosis of POTS, Postural Orthostatic Tachycardia Syndrome. POTS is a condition in which a person's heart rate increases by over 30 beats per minute when they move from lying or sitting to standing because of abnormal blood flow. I've literally watched my daughter go from resting heart rate of 65 to 170 in two minutes just from going, getting out of bed. This often leads to dizziness, blacking out, and passing out. Researchers compare the disability seen in POTS to the disability seen in congestive heart failure, or COPD. Currently, there is no cure. With this diagnosis came another out-of-state consultation, this time with a doctor in Texas. He provided suggestions that could be addressed here at home in Maine. Molly missed 12 weeks of school that year because despite having a diagnosis and treatment options, her symptoms continued to worsen with new onset of abdominal pain and continued head pain and fatigue. She started her sophomore year on a modified schedule. She had a shortened day. She started school later than other students. Molly's symptoms didn't improve and we were all frustrated and felt helpless when it came to managing her condition. Her condition had progressed to the point of only having the emergency room as an option. No one knew what to do to alleviate her chronic daily symptoms. Meds did not help, nor did hypnosis or osteopathic manipulation. This brings us to January 2016, two and a half years after Molly first became sick. Molly's pain was so bad that she was lying on my kitchen floor pleading with me to take her to the emergency room, which I did. When they couldn't manage her pain, they admitted her and she ended up in the hospital for three nights. This resulted in a referral to a new neurologist who suspected autoimmune disautonomia. He started her on IVIG treatment in March of 2016 and sent us to Beth Israel and Mass General for additional testing and opinions. Molly has been receiving inpatient IVIG treatments locally at Barbara Bush Children's Hospital every three to five weeks for two to three days ever since. In addition to the hospitals already referenced, Molly has been to Children's Hospital of Wisconsin and we have consulted with doctors in Minnesota and Pennsylvania. She is currently followed by an endocrinologist, a gastroenterologist, a neurologist, a rheumatologist, a urologist, and a cardiologist. It continues to be a bumpy road, but we've found support from friends and family, her doctors, her college, and Disautonomia International. As John mentioned, I'm the co-chair of the Disautonomia International Maine Support Group, which was just founded this year. Disautonomia International first started in 2012 and is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that seeks to improve the lives of over 70 million individuals around the world living with disorders of the autonomic nervous system. They offer patient and physician education resources, community outreach, legislative advocacy, and patient support for all autonomic disorders. They've raised over $4 million for research, education, and support. I am here tonight because October is Disautonomia Awareness Month. It took us two and a half years to get a diagnosis for Molly and we were considered lucky. It takes an average of four years for a patient to be diagnosed with POTS, largely because of lack of awareness. Interestingly, POTS is actually more common than multiple sclerosis. I am requesting a proclamation from the town of Scarborough to recognize October as Disautonomia Awareness Month. My hope is that by raising awareness, the journey for current and not-yet-diagnosed patients might not be as long and difficult as ours has been. My hope is that we will receive more funding to do more research so that we will one day find a cure. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come to the podium and speak on this issue? Thank you. That was moving. Thank you. So with that, is there a motion to approve this? So moved.
Second.
Any comments, discussion, councillor Fuller?
One question I had, so are we doing this just for this month of October or are we saying here on forward, every October would be an opportunity to raise awareness?
I believe the way it's worded would be this month of October.
We can't make it every October?
We can do it again.
Okay.
Am I allowed to make a comment or do I?
You have to do it from the podium.
So what I know about how, so this is new to me because as I said, I'm new to this position in the state of Maine. My understanding from Disautonomia International is that proclamations can be done annually to continue to help raise awareness. I would defer that obviously to the town council as to whether that's something you would allow or not. But my understanding of proclamations is that they can be redone annually.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Caterina?
Yeah, I thank you for that explanation. I had no idea what disautonomia was until I learned about it because of the town council and being friends with some people in the audience who have children affected by it. So thank you very much. And I think the thing to do is come back every October and say we need another proclamation because that just brings it back forward, back forward, back forward. So that's my suggestion.
Anyone else?
I guess for me, I just kind of echo. I do healthcare. I kind of represent purchasers in the marketplace. This is the first I've heard of this. So I think that awareness is really important. I think it is a good thing that maybe every year we do bring it back and we remind everybody that's out there about this. I don't think it is common knowledge that these types of, that's a compelling story. So thank you. With that, anybody else? All those in favor?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Did a great job. And for all of you that probably don't want to sit through the next hour or so.
Why wouldn't you, though?
If someone you would like to exit, that's perfectly fine. Thank you. Peter? Do we want to do a picture review or something?
Oh, yeah. Hey, John? You guys want a picture? Before we?
We're taking a quick break for a photo op.
Yeah.
Photo op?
John, why don't you get in with them since you sponsored the proclamation?
Jordan, put a ceiling.
Yeah, stand in front of here.
We might need to vacate. Where's Waldo?
To stay in as well because you're the ones who have decided.
I think you can clerk this. Go ahead, you too. Go ahead, you too.
Cheers.
I'm on the other side as well.
Thanks for this one?
Yes.
My question is, what do we need?
I don't want to sit in there. What are you doing? We're not trying to photo op.
John, I've read it. Jeez. Three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Stay on you.
Thank you very, very much.
I think we're still rolling, so just be careful with the.
With comments? I'm sorry. I'm going to reset.
You have to keep us separate.
Okay. The next, the next order number is Old Business nineteen oh sixty-nine, second reading on the proposed amendment to Chapter three eleven, Schedule of Fees pertaining to the in lieu fees for the Affordable Housing and Development transfers. And Tom, I think this has been in front of us before, and.
Yes, Jay Chase, planning director, is here. I know he's spoken from the podium. He's pleased to do it again if the council wishes. If not, I think he's comfortable right in his seat as well.
It's my pleasure.
I think, I think we're good, looks like. Would anybody like to speak on this particular item this evening? Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion comments?
Just that it's been a long time coming, and I think this was, this came, I remember having a conversation my very first year on the council about the twenty thousand dollar fee being ridiculously low, and so I'm pleased that this has come in fruition before I leave the council.
And I'm just going to bring a different perspective to the conversation tonight. I do not support this. As a small business owner, fees this large are a huge deterrent to being able to take on any new endeavor or project, so for that reason, I'm not in favor of it, but I suspect that I am in the minority, and I do absolutely support the beneficiaries of the fees with affordable housing.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing none? All those in favor?
I think it's five, one?
Where are you going to get his name?
Four, one.
Yep. Okay, the next order of business is New Business, order number nineteen oh seven seven, first reading in Schedule of Public Hearing on the second, on the proposed amendments to Chapter three oh two, Scarborough Town Council Rules and Policies, Section two hundred. With that, maybe there's a introduction of this?
Sure, I'm happy to provide that since Councilor Donovan is not here. So this issue has been batted around for, well, I would say it was punted for about a year, and now it's been batted around for another nine to ten months. So it kind of came out of an incident that happened near the end of my first year, and I think the policy as written and in intent is a very well-intentioned policy. My understanding is that historically, you know, what had happened with, before this policy was put in place, folks would sit even behind the council table here and, for example, put out signs supporting their candidate or not, or disparaging signs as well against other candidates, which, for me, comes down to a real simple principle of good judgment. And, you know, so I think that's, that's my understanding of where the policy was born, to kind of keep people, you know, a little bit more in check when they're behind the table, as we heard some people speak to earlier this evening as well. At the same time, I think we have to be very cautious around, you know, infringing on freedom of speech, and people do have a right to their opinions and should be able to put those things out there. So anyway, that's, that's why this policy, that's why this is before you this evening. This year, the Rules and Policy Committee, we probably discussed it three, maybe four different meeting times. We tried to do some language changes that we thought would make it a little clearer, and ultimately came to the place that, no matter what we did, it was too subjective. We did seek input from legal counsel as well as to the lawful position of the policy, and while, you know, the law, the law is always great, right? Because it's, well, it could be legal, but maybe it's not. It was, it was very gray. There was no definitive. It was borderline, yes, you could be infringing on freedom of speech rights. So with all that said, the committee ultimately decided that we would be better off to just eliminate the policy altogether and go back to, you know, a place of, let's use good judgment. Let's treat each other with mutual respect and, and hope that that's enough, because it should be. So that's, that's where we are, and that is the recommendation of the Rules and Policy Committee.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Any motion on the table? Seeing, no one wants to speak to it, we will entertain motion, so the main, does someone want to introduce a, Councilwoman Foley?
So I would like to make a quick amendment if I could. I would like to, oh, sorry, motion on the floor first, yeah. So.
Second? Second.
Okay. So I would like to amend the motion, if possible, to make the second reading as, the next meeting, the public hearing and second reading in one fold, and my reasoning behind that, I typically don't like that way of doing business. I like to have the separation, but given the timeframe and how long this has been, this literally has been a two-year piece, and part of that is because in year two, the Rules and Policy Committee did not meet once, so there was never an opportunity for this to move forward. So I'd like to see this, some resolution to this with the sitting council versus then having, it could be two brand-new people, it could be two former counselors, but either way, it's been discussed amongst the sitting, people who are sitting here today. So that's my, I understand how people might not agree with that, but that's my request.
So is there a second of that? Second. With that, open to discussion. Anybody have any comments or suggestions, or? Councilor Johnson?
Well, speaking specifically to the amendment, in this case, I, you know, I completely agree with Katie. I think it's, it's prudent of us. We have, we've hashed this out with the current committee. We're looking at different committee science assignments. We're looking at our election. The interest in this from the public seems minimal, so I'd support the amendment, so.
Anybody else? So with that?
Yeah, I guess I.
That was kind of like a little.
Yeah, there was a, I was pulling it back. I guess I don't, I don't support the amendment just because it, I, I support the work that has been done, and we'll advocate for that, but I don't want to add any perceived impropriety around this, and I think it should have enough merit, you know, merit on its own to survive an election, so I wouldn't support the amendment, but I am in favor of what's been done.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Kettering?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I agree with Councilor Clucci that I don't see any need to rush this. I mean, give people time to see what it is, and if they want to speak to it, fine. If they don't, fine, and it'll get passed. No need to amend it.
Okay, Councilor?
Yeah, I respectfully disagree with that. There have been long delays on this content-wise, long procedural delays. We're in the middle of a, of a campaign. I think it's right and correct for us to clear the books of this language and get it behind us and start relying on, on our own common sense rather than a rule that was, may have been well-intended but was not, not well-constructed and didn't seem like it was ever really effectively applied. So I think we need to get stuff off the books that doesn't belong and, and try to keep life simple, simpler if we can.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit more context, maybe, especially for Councilor Clucci, who has, was not here at the time. And I know, you know, not supposed to take things personally, right? Politics is not personal, this is business, but in this particular case, I will say it is a little bit personal in that I was threatened personally with censure and on a policy that may not even be legal to begin with. When I requested that the Rules and Policy Committee take this issue up, I was denied that opportunity. I made, and that was, that request was made not only by myself, but by members of the public, and that committee never met in a twelve-month period. I, I've made a plea to the, my fellow committee member to, you know, support me in requesting that we meet and discuss this issue, because I live in a country where I'm, if I'm accused of something, I should be able to defend myself, or at least have the conversation around it, and I was denied that, and that, that committee member also did not support putting it to the committee. At that point, the only option I had was I could have, as a sitting counselor, added it to the council agenda, just as an item by, without, by circumventing the committee process. I didn't want to do that because I felt like that was the wrong thing to do. We, this is how we do things. We go through the committee process, but for me, this is important, and I would like to see some resolution to it and, before I leave the council. So I appreciate that consideration. It was not rushed. It's been two years of conversations, so I don't, I don't think two years is rushing things at all to get to some resolution. Thanks.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, just to add to that, it is, it is Councilor Foley's last meeting, next meeting, and, and I'm going to be completely honest, I think she deserves this, and I'm going to support the amendment, and this should have been done well over a year ago. And to Don's point, we have very politically active people on the council, as we should. I think that's everybody's right, and I want to clear that out for the next last, let's say, week and a half of, before the election, and so I, I would, I freely admit that I am supporting this amendment because I think Councilor Foley deserves it. It's that, that simple for me, so.
And I guess I'll jump in, and I'll support the amendment because I think it is important that, you know, we, the sitting counselors now are kind of familiar with it. We may or may not have new council members later, so I think it is time to kind of, for us to look at what's happened. I think we all know sort of the issues and then kind of put this to bed and move forward.
So with that, any other further comments on this particular one? All those in favor of the amendment? I think all but one. So now we go back to the main motion.
You're supposed to say opposed.
Opposed, okay. Going back to the main motion as amended, is there any further discussion of the main motion as amended? Councilor Johnson?
The only, the only thing I wanted to add to this is that Councilor Donovan was not, was not present, so just this, this is brought forth. I don't know where Councilor Donovan stands on this, so it came out of committee two to zero, so I just wanted to say that publicly. I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I just thought that, that it's important to know that Councilor Donovan wasn't available when we put this forth, so.
Any other comments on the, Councilwoman Kettering?
I, I've always had some mixed feelings about this particular section, political activities. As people know, I'm extremely politically active in a lot of things, but I also feel that, I mean, I may not need these guardrails, so to speak, but I am way familiar with the years of late nineties and early two thousands when we had a council that was way out of control, and this is why this came up. I will support removing it, but I will, with a caveat, that we are assuming that future counselors are going to be able to behave themselves appropriately, but that's all I wanted to say, because there is another section in this that has not been brought forward that says something to the effect of that this in no way restricts a person's First Amendment rights. The only restriction is, you know, in your activities as a town council, when you're holding yourself out as a town councilor or in your official pages as a town councilor, you're not going to be, you know, saying, I support this one, the other one, I don't support this one, I don't support the other one, just because, but anyway, but I will support this.
And I guess where I'll lay in, this, this is a tough one for me. I think I've learned the hard way. I used to put some comments on social media about political stuff. I've stopped doing that. I've just kind of made a choice that I think, sitting in behind at this table, that it's probably appropriate to let others kind of carry the conversation. I do know, I think it's really hard to differentiate between if you have a Facebook page, a sort of, social media page that says, "For Town Council" versus your personal page. I think people know, I, I know in this, today alone, there have been eighteen people that have pulled or, you know, looked at my town council page and also looked at my personal page, so I think people do look to us for what we're saying and doing, so I struggle with it. I, I like the concept about, let's believe in the best, and this is good judgment, and hopefully going forward, we won't have issues. If we do, we can always come back and readdress it, but I think I will support this as, as it is, because I think there's been a lot of thought and conversation that's gone into it. Councilwoman Foley?
Yeah, so one thing that had occurred to me, and we didn't necessarily put it forward as a formal motion, but for me, the hardest part of the conversation, the challenging part, was defining what it meant to be doing your duties, fulfilling your duties. So certainly when we're here tonight and we're sitting behind this table, that's part of our council official duties and responsibilities, and a policy could be written as such that, to kind of Jean Marie's point, that while you're sitting by the table, you're not, you know, holding up a sign saying, you know, I hate, I'm not going to say, anything like that, and I, and I think that's, again, you know, what, so, and that, I believe, in the conversation with the attorney, would, would be okay, because you're, it's a very clear delineation of what that duty and responsibility was, but the, the gray matter or the part that was ambiguous is the whole idea of social media, or if I'm at the post office, you know, am I Katie Foley the citizen, or am I Katie Foley the town councilor, or am I Katie Foley a real estate agent? I mean, people have a hard time ever taking that hat off of you, and so that's why I think we kind of came to that place where it just seemed simpler to maybe scratch it, and then maybe the Rules and Policy Committee, you know, takes it up again next year and again, makes it a very clear piece of, of not from behind this table, or something like that. I think that might be more appropriate, or, and even, or talking about it as a group in your, you know, either early team-building or, you know, establishing group norms, kind of a thing, so, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I will say, when I read this particular policy, it kind of struck me as odd. I don't think it was real clear, because we're elected politicians and we should be political to some extent, and your choice might be to not participate in social media, yours might be too, that's, you know, it's, it's the, that mix that makes it all work. So I, I, but I think the original intent of the policy probably was to restrict behavior behind this table, and it just didn't do that very clearly, so, yeah, maybe a second cut at it would be more clear, but I think the confusion that it was creating wasn't worth the protections that we were gaining, gaining from it.
Hey, Councilor Johnson?
I will not bring any signs to council meetings.
Through elections.
Let me say that publicly.
So with any other comments? So all those in favor with the motion as amended? Order number nineteen oh seventy-eight, Act on the Request from the Communications Committee to Adopt the Public Engagement and Noticing Manual?
Yes, I'll do my best to introduce this matter. I've not been working directly with Communications Committee, but I am very familiar with the policy. This is a policy that staff developed about a year and a half ago, frankly. We started work on it. Much of that work began with the council, you know, really wanting to be more consistent, more clear with our communications, and so we did some research and found some good model policies and tailored them to our purpose. This policy is actually in place and in practice with staff. We're meeting with all departments right now to introduce the manual to them, and the intent is really clear and fairly simple. We're trying to be very consistent and have a standardized set of ways we communicate. We have an action matrix that tries to understand what the task at hand is and therefore what the sort of messaging around that effort ought to be. So this policy, you know, we're moving forward at the administrative level. I think it's before you somewhat awkwardly, but I think the purpose of it is really to raise awareness, to really telegraph to the community that this is how we intend to conduct our business and hold us accountable to it, and so I might regret the precedent it sets because I think this is clearly the, in the administrative realm, but nonetheless, I think it's an important thing to demonstrate to our community how we intend to communicate going forward.
So with that, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close out public comment. Is there a motion to approve this act in the request from the Communications Committee?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion comments?
So I think, well, and Councilor Clucci, you're just going to. So, I think, well, and Counselor Cooley, you're just going to jump in here. I think what you just mentioned at the end there, Tom, is exactly what we were kind of struggling with, is that really our purview, I mean, Larissa brought this to us, we think it looks great, we think there could be some other formatting pieces that could be streamlined, simpler, whatever, but is it really our purview to be doing something like this? So, do we need to take any kind of formal action? It kind of feels like we don't.
Perhaps you don't, but I don't think there's any harm in it either, other than setting a precedent that, again, I might regret, but I don't think there's any harm in it.
So, it's the only harm to you, not to us, is that it?
That's the way I see it.
Counselor Kettering?
Well, I agree. I have no idea why we need to adopt this. I see this as, I think it's fabulous, I think it's great as a staff administrative, you know, this is how we're going to work as a town of Scarborough, the employees and staff and management and whatever, and Town Council, I guess, but I, so this is really nice, but what are we adopting? I mean, it's like, huh?
Perhaps I can make it simpler. I think my purpose has largely been achieved by being on the agenda, by hearing somewhat of a ringing endorsement. So, I don't think council needs to take action, so you could certainly dispense with it. Not in a negative kind of way.
Which one?
Paul, was your hand up?
Okay.
Time to tell you guys.
If they do this, it's kind of like this. Yeah. I'm in the same boat. I actually really like the document. I think it's great work. I think moving to standards and, you know, something that we can all look, a guide, look towards, or staff can look towards to improve our communications is wonderful and important, but I don't think it's our role to prescribe it. I absolutely endorse it. And, you know, and maybe it would be worth moving back to committee to try to put something in order together that might make more sense for the council to adopt, but short of that, I love the manual, I'm glad you're doing it, I think it's progress, but I don't want to force it on you, because I think these things need to be fluid.
So, the reason why I'm laughing is, I was chair of the Communication Committee.
And then he quit, and made me the chair.
No, I think I got moved off, but the, for obvious reasons. No, I'm sorry. So, I'm going to own this, because I was chair, and I believe this actually came up literally our first Communication Committee meeting. And to be completely honest with you, I think me and Dawn made up two-thirds of that Communication Committee. We were grossly inexperienced, and I think that Larissa brought something forward to us that we thought was great, and I wanted the whole world to see it. And so, we voted on it. So, I guess what I would say is, I will own this. This was, I believe, Paul Johnson nine months ago. Am I saying, yeah? So, I think this probably isn't appropriate, and I think it came from the committee's inexperience, to be completely honest with you, but I still, like every-
But you've accomplished your goal, because the whole world has seen it.
Correct, right. I mean, think of the awareness we just rose.
So, I'd just like to sort of, in an odd way, build on the comment that Counselor Johnson just made. So, there are now more than, I would probably call this a supermajority, but you have the three current members of the Communications Committee here, including the one who started all of this and then left us. So, there's more than enough people to say, yes, it's here and now, and however, whatever unholy path it followed to get here, there's no harm in us approving it, and we'll maybe be more procedurally disciplined in the future. But it's a good resource, and, you know, there's an expression that success has a thousand parents, so maybe we're having a hard time finding two or three of them, but it's here and now, I don't see any harm in us voting, and it's going to be more trouble to send it back to committee and then recirculate it. So, I'd be inclined just to vote the thing and say we're going to support it and use it. I think it's a great resource, and I'm still enthusiastic about it. The town's using it already, it's off and running, and it's guidelines for behavior, and we've spent a lot of the meeting talking about that, so I don't see any harm in voting it.
Counselor Kettering?
We could table it indefinitely with no date.
No action taken.
You know, and just, and say, "This is really nice, but we're going to table it, we love it, we think it's lovely," and whatever, and just table it.
Yeah, I would recommend, if that's your desire, is to, it would be postponed indefinitely.
No date, no date.
There's no expectation that it ever comes back before you. That's the proper motion, if that's your desire.
But it's here now as a vote, so we have to have somebody make an amendment to change the motion.
Withdraw what you have, and then ask to postpone.
Yeah, I guess just, so it's like, that's an option to withdraw, and I guess I'll just weigh in. I don't think there's any harm in, you know, we voting it and kind of giving it its acknowledgement of the Communications Committee. So, I would support it going for revote, but if someone wants to take it off and withdraw it?
The only reason I would say to take it off, withdraw it, and table it is, by voting on it, it's sort of, we're giving it an official informator, which means that then it becomes an official document, and then you've got to follow it to the letter potentially. And I don't necessarily want that to happen, because I think, as Counselor Clutcher said, it's fluid, it should be fluid, but it gives them great, it's a fabulous document for staff to be using, but I don't think it needs our informator. So, that's why I would be in favor of withdrawing it and just tabling it with our enthusiasm and whatever for the use.
So, is that a motion to withdraw?
Yes. Second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion to withdraw? Counselor Foley?
Yeah, I just, again, in high, well-intentioned, again, and a great document, but if it had to come back to the council every single time for any change, it could just become more of a pain than a useful tool. And if we have formally adopted, it would have to, any changes, you know, communication changes, right, constantly? So, any changes would have to come back through the committee, and I just don't see that that's the best use of our time, so. Or your time, because I'm done.
So, is there any further discussion of the motion to withdraw?
I, there's a rule, first do no harm, so I don't really see where this would do any harm. So, I appreciate the procedural turn here, but I think we're dancing on the head of a pin. So, and I always get a little bit uncomfortable when Jean Marie uses Latin words that I don't know.
All right, so, if there's no more comments, motion, I mean, vote on the motion to withdraw. Who's in favor of withdrawing it? So, it looks like one, two, three, four. All those that are not, two, so. So, we draw. All right. Order number 19080, Act on Request to Authorize the Town Manager to Enter Into a Memorandum of Understanding Between a Town of Scarborough and Crossroads Holdings LLC and Edge Sports Group. And Tom, I think you had some introductory comments, some thoughts?
I do. I think last agenda, I think it was a warm-up to this one perhaps, and I hope I can make it easier for you. I've been the kind of the lead proponent and the chief architect of this for almost six weeks now. It came up in early August, I think, at least the germ of the idea in my mind. We've come a long way since then, and the purpose that I thought that this document would serve, and a very important one, was twofold. One, our potential private partners were very interested in process and timeline, and this document accomplishes a couple of things in that regard, most importantly, timeline, sets a kind of an end date for our process. The council's really answered the process question in great detail by forming an ad hoc committee. That committee is up and running, functioning highly and successfully so far, and I'm pleased to report that our, the private parties have been frequent participants, and so they're demonstrating certainly the willingness to be an active participant in that process. And so, largely the reasons that I thought this sort of understanding that would identify mutual expectations and obligations was necessary are, have kind of been replaced by other things. So, this document was intended to provide clarity, and to the extent that it doesn't, I don't think it's something we ought to move forward with at this point. So, if it's the will of the council, I would suggest the correct action would be a motion to postpone indefinitely, and the effectiveness of that would be to not vote it down, but just say that we don't expect this to ever come back before us.
So, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this.
And I'll second it.
Take it off the agenda.
And I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think you spoke very clearly to that, Tom. I, you know, six weeks ago, I was an advocate for this as well, as we were trying to feel our way around where we were with the community center process. But now that we have a really strong committee up and running, the developer's been an active participant, and they're really collaborating well. I don't, I don't think it adds anything to the process, and it's potentially, it could confuse things or muddy the waters a little. So, I support tabling it. I like, you know, like I said, I was supportive a couple of weeks ago, but I think we've moved past where it's useful right now.
Counselor Kettering?
I would agree with Counselor Clutcher on this. I know I was a big one, I was pushing it six weeks ago, but six weeks ago, it wasn't, we didn't have the committee, we didn't have the developers on board, we didn't have two town counselors involved with that committee. I think that things seem to be going swimmingly, so to speak, at this point. So, I appreciate the town manager putting all the work into this, but I also appreciate him saying, you know, "Yeah, we don't need it right now." So, I would agree with tabling it or withdrawing, whatever we want to do with it.
Anyone else on this issue? Counselor Foley?
I'm going to support tabling it as well. I did have a question, and Tom, forgive me if you did actually answer already an email you may have, I'm behind. The one concern I had about this was that if we were to enter that agreement, there was a stipulation around not withholding a separate space for a community center, that being taken out of. Do you remember this?
I remember you asked the question, and I don't believe I answered your question.
Okay, so I didn't make that up, all right.
And I'm not sure if I'm in a position to answer it tonight.
Okay. If we're going to table, it's not going to matter anyway.
Fair enough.
But my, I guess, I guess the reason I bring it up, and the reason I just want to plant the seed with my fellow counselors, is that as you move forward and through this, I do hope that that's a leverage point you don't give up. Because until you've made a decision about one or the other, and which way you want to go, you give that up now, you don't get it back. So, that was a concern that I had. So, just-
Yeah, the one thing I will say in that regard, the backdrop, the foothold, I guess, if you will, for this conversation is in the Credit Enhancement Agreement. That's a legal binding document for both parties, and this in no way ever intended to give up any rights under that, and I couldn't agree more with Counselor Foley that we shouldn't do that until we're ready to and we know it's the right thing to do. There's a lot of time between now and four years from now, which is our kind of window of opportunity to explore this. Yeah, and I will say, Counselor Foley, that there was, in one of the earlier drafts, there was some language in there around that, and we did sit down and talked about that very concerned, and they were very willing to kind of back out that language. So, that was expressed, and I think, and I guess I would echo everybody else, I think probably withdrawing this is the right thing to do at this point in time. I mean, I think it's better, sometimes documents, even the best drafted documents can create legal issues downstream, I think, as long as the parties are in good faith moving forward. And it sounds like we are progressing, and we've satisfied what the developers' concerns were.
And yourself?
Yes.
I think probably sometimes less is more, so I think, let's continue. So, I think, with the, anybody else have any more comments on the motion to withdraw? All those in favor? I think that's, thank you. Item number eight, non-action item. Tom, I think this was just kind of give us a little bit of update on tax cards and some other thoughts, and things that have been progressing since the last time we had a conversation, then we can open up to Counselor comments?
Yeah, I do want to appreciate the council's giving me great time and staff great time. I think we had two hours for a thorough workshop at your last meeting two weeks ago. I think there was a lot of good territory covered. We don't expect that that necessarily closes the door, we're open to further conversation should that be important. I know Counselor Hamel was not at that meeting. In the course of that discussion, the issue of property tax cards and the printing and mailing of them was discussed. I don't recall it was discussed in great detail, but it was kind of on the table, and there was no clear direction, one way or another, given to staff, other than us saying that we're not, we don't think it's necessarily necessary at this point, given the fact that we have some online tools now available. Certainly, cards are available to folks. Anyone who doesn't have access to computers, they can call us or stop by, we'll print them a card and send them home with it, no appointment necessary. So, at this juncture, we think that there's enough different resources for folks to obtain that information should they want it. I'll also report on the GIS tool that we put together. This was an interactive map that allowed folks to look at sales in their area, look at their property, do some comparative analysis. As part of that, we also had a form, a Google form, that folks could request abatement changes, particularly to data changes that their cards are wrong. We've had less than 10 so far. So, unfortunately, we'd hoped that there would be more use, and maybe there are use, but people just are seeing that as an easier, comfortable way of communicating with us. So, that will continue to be available, but I just thought you might be interested to know what our experience with data has been. The assessor you met with earlier tonight, he continues to be meeting. He's dedicated Monday, Wednesday, Fridays of each week during the day, and then into Wednesday evenings to meet with residents to discuss abatement matters in an informal way. His experience has been that there's been a fair number of changes, a lot of them have been fairly small, you know, wrong bedroom, or quality factor, and he's pleased to make those changes. But there have, you know, there are certain some exceptions, but in large part, the meetings have been productive, because folks want to know that people are, want to hear their concerns, but the results are fairly minimal from an abatement point of view. He's continuing to have those hours through the end of this month, and going forward, I need to give him a little relief, because he's got some other responsibilities. But what we've found is, in working, folks are coming into the office, staff is empowered to make those sorts of data changes that are clear and obvious, so they don't need to occupy, you know, a scheduled appointment with the assessor for that. Furthermore, challenging abatement matters, they are referred to him, and we are scheduling appointments. But right now, he's doing things every 30 minutes, and we're finding that there's a fair amount of, I don't say wasted time, but not all take 30 minutes. And so, it's not terribly efficient, you see his time at this point. So, you have our commitment that we'll continue to process these as simply and as informally as possible. And that's kind of my update where we are at this point. Does that help?
So, I pushed to get this on the agenda tonight, and due to my absence from the last Town Council meeting and workshop, which Tom referenced, I requested that this be added to the agenda, based on Counselor Johnson's suggestion at the end of the workshop that detailed property cards be mailed to all residential taxpayers, and that it be discussed by the full council. So, we never really reached a position on that. I agree that the topic of mailing out detailed property cards, you know, is really sort of a lightning rod for me. It's one of several aspects of the revaluation project that I feel cannot be left to wither and die, following our experience, and all the very hard work and effort that's gone through to try to remediate the process after the fact. So, but in a way, that's sort of, the mailing of the detailed property cards are sort of like it's a poster child for the entire effort. You know, what should have been an early step in the process to validate with homeowners their assessments, you know, may now in fact be a step that, you know, that may be the last step, or a step that never happens at all. So, I think we owe, it's a broader issue for me, I think we owe it to our citizens and the town staff, who've labored courageously, and our role as responsible stewards of the town's assets, it's a charter requirement that we do that, to learn what went wrong, and to require that certain steps be completed going forward. And I think it's got to take some sort of formal council directive, including corrective measures, that we'd like to see going forward, so we do not leave this open-ended. So, I'm recommending they would include things like designing the proper process and timing going forward, perhaps a yearly or rotating basis, as a crude measure, versus the crude measure of a minimum state requirement of falling below the 80% assessment versus market value, selecting the correct expert resources to lead the process, starting with, you know, what's going to happen with our own full-time assessor, and the staffing of the assessing department, including a professional consultant, expert in assessing, with well-trained and qualified staff. And then, holding the experts accountable, holding the people that retain, you know, whether it's KRT appraisal, or Tyler Technologies, or whoever we use in the future, you know, holding the experts accountable. I know we've substituted a lot of our own- I know we, we've substituted a lot of our own remedial efforts as councilors, and I think all that has been welcome, and, and not expected, and a surprising effort, but it's not, not appropriate. We really need to rely on the experts for that, and not be substitating our, substituting our activity or our, or analysis for that. And finally, partnering with the public to make sure that the responsibility for the success of this process is a shared one, and I think that, I think we failed to do that this year. So, I'm, I am open in terms of how we process this, but I think it's going to take more than just an up-down vote on, or an agenda item discussion on mailing detailed property cards.
Yeah, and I'll just run a little bit, Don, I think what, what Tom, Tom and I had discussed, is, yeah, we need to have a workshop. You know, tonight, you know, there was another issue, but, but I, we agree that we need to have a workshop to talk about next steps, and what are we going to do that would address a lot of those things you just articulated. So, I, I don't know if that resonates with everybody else, if that would be a workshop that we should do to talk about, what do we do going forward? It sounds like the open-ended item tonight is the property cards, so I don't know if anybody has some thoughts, or others want to comment, so.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Counsel Kennedy?
I, I have never agreed with me only out the property cards, with all due respect to Ms. Hamel. Just because there is a lot of online access, and people can call and get, but that being said, a lot of the factors he talked about makes sense. And, yeah, it should be potentially workshop, but I would wait till after the beginning of the year, when you see you've got a new council seated, and
And a new assessor.
A new assessor, and all of that. So, I would, I would wait until the beginning of the year to, to do that.
Okay. Sorry.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'm all set. I'm good, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I don't, I don't think it's cost-effective to mail out the property tax cards, but I, I'll step back to the, you know, communications agenda item that we had earlier about the annual. I think Don's point is, is well-taken, in that I don't know that we have the procedures quite ironed out for how we approach assessing. And I don't think we will until we hire the, whoever the next assessor is going to be, but I would like to see something developed for, for administratively anyways, for the staff to follow, and I would absolutely support directing the town manager to see that that happens.
Counsel Johnson?
So, first, I wanted to thank Counsel Hamel for still beating this drum. I think, even though there's not a whole lot that's going to come out of us discussing this, you know, when you have many members of the public expressing the same concern, this is better than just not responding at all. So, I do, even though this is a non-action item, I do appreciate the fact that we have a chance to discuss this. I, I agree with Counsel Clutcher. I don't think it's cost-effective right now, but, but I do think we need to look at, what are the action items we can do moving forward? And the things I'm hearing pretty clearly is that, as a council, perhaps we need to decide if we're going to do this on a rotating basis, right? So, it, it, there is something that we can walk out of this right now. It's like, we're going to do, it seems to me in the future, possibly near future, we're going to make a decision on, are we going to change the way we did things? And, and it sounds like we might, and it's a very strong possibility. And then, I would take this opportunity to publicly ask the town manager, when we're interviewing for a new tax assessor, and this is not a reflection on Mr. Boford, because I think he's fantastic, but, you know, clearly, clearly there should be some interview questions about the communication surrounding this, and, and how, and what the new assessor can bring to the table. Again, we did a third party for this, so I think, I think the majority of this is on a third-party entity, not the town. But anyways, I wanted to thank you, Don, for, for at least beating this drum. It's important when constituents care about something, that we at least have the opportunity to publicly explain why we have not acknowledged the request. I'm with Counsel Clutcher in the long run, in the immediate future, but I think we have some actionable items we'll be able to pursue, so.
Counsel Foley?
Two really important things. Number one, how do you pronounce your last name?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, sorry, I was not on the mic. How do you pronounce your last name?
I pronounce it Clutcher.
Okay. I want to get that right, because everyone does it different. Alright. So, I, I think I agree with everything that others have said. At this point, I don't think it makes sense, but I also am grateful, and think that conversation's important. And most importantly is, anytime we have a big lesson like this, figuring out a way to codify it, make it, because that which gets written gets done, so that the next time around, we don't make the same mistakes. Because it's easy to go, oh, we shouldn't, and then we just talk about it, and then nothing's, you know, procedurally changed for the next time around. So, I don't think that's going to happen this time, and that's, that's good.
And I guess I would kind of echo what's been said. I'm not sure at this point, especially with Tom sharing, how many, how many people have actually asked for cards in the last couple of weeks? At one point?
Well, I, I think there probably have been scores of folks that have come in for cards, which we're pleased to do. I was referring to this new online
The new online, okay.
Component, that, that hasn't taken yet, but that's, it's still new, so that may, it may in the future.
So, may I make a motion to withdraw the request to vote on the property cards?
Well, this is a non-action item, right? So, it's just a discussion. It's not necessary.
We're just talking.
So, no, you can't.
Thank you.
Get sassy, with two meetings left in, you have to get sassy.
But I guess the question, Tom, so, but there still is a vehicle, a way for folks to get their property cards, if, if they're interested, and you're still making accommodations for that. So, I think based on that...
They can call, we'll mail it, they can stop in, we can print it on the spot, so I, I, yeah, there certainly are ways, and of course, all the online resources.
So, then I think the second takeaway from some of the comments, what I'm hearing is, yeah, we need to have a workshop, or we come out, we codify it, to, to get, to Counsel Foley's words, and come up with a process and require, you know, really think about how we're going to do it going forward, so we do learn those lessons. So, it's, it's set down, so going forward, there's, there's a guidepost.
Yeah.
That's... Is there anybody else? Have we, have we done what we needed to do, you think, on that one?
Okay. Item number nine, standing, standing special committee reports. I guess I'll start at that end of the table. John?
Great. Paul and I haven't talked about who's going to hit the
Go ahead.
The community center committee. Fill in the blanks.
Yep.
We were, we continue to meet weekly, we did not meet this week due to the holiday, but we meet Monday evening on, at six thirty.
Excuse me.
The meetings are open to the public. The committee developed a survey, there's a subcommittee that developed a survey that is circulating now, in the early stages of outreach anyways, and the response, in terms of number of people who have actually completed the survey, has been impressive. I think we're approaching eight hundred, as of the last that I heard. And that doesn't include any of the many paper surveys that have been sent out and distributed, so. So, people are engaged, which is good, and I think the committee had a really good plan about how to try to solicit as much feedback as we can, and I'm hopeful that we'll get some meaningful information as it relates to public sentiment for a community center, and how to pay for it, and all those, the questions that are asked. So, I, I think the progress is being made, the timeline is extremely tight, and, and everybody understands that, but I think to this point, the, the work's been very, very good.
So, I think I'll just use this time to, I've, we've received some emails with some concerns about the community center process, so I just want to say publicly some of the things I've written to some constituents over email. I think that it's important for the public to understand that the council is not taking any action on this whatsoever, until probably well, well, who knows, but definitely no later than December fifteenth. The committee is charged specifically to give us a recommendation on their work, and if this lease agreement is even worth it. It is well within the committee's rights, and I can tell you, we have a lot of critical thinkers on the committee. They may recommend that this is not worth it. And we don't know the financials, there is no, we, we've had, we had one LOI presented to the town council, six to eight weeks ago, it was promptly withdrawn. So, frankly, we don't know. We don't know what the funding mechanism will be, we don't know what the revenue model is, we still have a lot of unanswered questions. So, as a council, we're, I just think it's important to realize that there's no action worth taking until the committee is doing the work. Lastly, John, Counsel Clutcher and I, we're non-voting members on this committee. This, the town council has no influence, so to speak, over this committee. This is made up of nine people who have volunteered their time from all walks of life, and again, are from various really interests in the community center. It's not, it's not made up of nine people trying to magically make up a community center. And as someone who is highly skeptical of the timeline, I have been encouraged by the management of the committee so far, and the progress of the committee. Now, now, we've done good for phase one, or we're doing good for phase one, but then, now there's several, several phases. So, perhaps once we get to the financial phase of the committee, then may, perhaps we'll reach a snag or two. But I think it's important, it's not the town council sitting around talking about the community center. This is, we had fifty applicants, we chose nine, it's, it's their responsibility. So, I just wanted to say that publicly, because I think a lot, there's a lot of confusion going on, and rightfully so, that's, I don't think that's anybody's fault. I think when we, we have two things coming down the line, one's public, one's private, there's a downs development, there's lots of things to try to articulate to the public. So, if, if anybody is listening this evening, I just wanted to articulate that directly, so.
Counsel Foley?
Yes, thanks. The Conservation Commission met this week. They continue to work towards that project I mentioned, meeting or two ago, around sea level rise, and they've got some teachers on board from the schools, and they're going to go after a grant to get some funding to help with that, and try and bring on a guest artist. And this would be down at Pine Point, I believe, it would be a way to create a large mural that would give a, a really clear visual of how sea level rise will affect us down the road. A lot of discussion and concern around, there's a shared road, Sawyer Road, that was shared between Scarborough and Cape Elizabeth, and there's some, some traffic studies that are going to be ensuing there to see what's going to happen, but it's, it's an interesting particular case study for abandonment, because depending on which way that goes, it's, there's really a need to let nature take its course in some places. So, they're keeping an eye on that. And then, Jamie, the sustainability coordinator, shared with us that I think it's going to, that we'll be coming to an ordinance committee to be discussing and potentially approving zoning for large-scale solar, which is very, currently, our zoning does not allow that, and so there's some very interested parties around that. So, that's it from the Conservation Committee. Communication Committee also met, we discussed the SWAC analysis. Counsel Johnson's time was not without some, you know, pieces put forward, so, and Larissa's going to compile kind of that discussion, and we'll, we'll come back through. But we, we really spent most of the time kind of cleaning up some matters, and thought, and talking about really how that committee could be more effective, or more an opportunity going forward, and what that will look like. And that's really it, I think.
Thank you. Counsel Kennedy?
Ordinance meets tomorrow.
Yeah, first, ordinance is tomorrow at four PM, if we aren't all blown away before, before then. I mean, there are high wind warnings, but town hall never loses electricity, so we should be good. It's just getting there, but, so stay tuned, but we, we are planning at four PM, and it will be our final pass-through of the potential marijuana ordinance. We'd like to get it up to the council after tomorrow, so that the council can begin working on it. People forget sometimes that the ordinance committee, we don't make the decisions per se, what we do is hammer out what we think, the way the winds blowing, and what we should be bringing forward, but it's certainly up to the council, so. That's all that's on the agenda tomorrow, is, is the marijuana ordinance. Also, the seniors, we met Tuesday, and they are planning to have a table at the election with information or whatever for seniors of interest, and I will be covering that table for a couple of hours. And then, Long Range Planning Committee, we are starting to look at the comprehensive plan, we have plans back, and Todi, after the meeting, I need to get my hard coffee, I keep forgetting to pick it up up here, I don't know, I suppose it's the front desk? Do you know anything about it? She's the senior, hopefully. So, but that's what we're starting to focus on now. Finally, the comp plan may be back and ready to be looked at, so that's it.
Counsel Hamel?
Two updates, one on appointments in negotiations committee. You know, we've been working for some time on, on the process and timing related to the, the town manager's performance evaluation and employment agreement. Now, this is a tricky one, because we, we, you know, it involves both public and executive committee elements, but we wanted to alert the council to the fact, and motivated by the same desire to try to get work that's been underway out, out to the council, so that at least it's, it's on their radar screen as they, as we move forward after November. And the timing of all this, you know, won't be until after the first of the year anyway, but we did want to alert the council and the public to the work in progress. And we looked at several things, we looked at some, some disconnect between timing of employment agreement aspects, as well as what the charter requires, and then the other private and public aspects of the work that I talked about, and then just, eventually there will need to be some sort of, you know, recommendation on pay, total comp. I want to thank Tom, and also in particular Liam Gallagher for, who has been a great resource in this, in this effort, and
That's true.
And now, that's required a lot of flexibility on both of the parts to do that, and this, you know, they've really approached it with the right spirit of cooperation, so that's made our work a lot easier. So, we'll look forward to, to bringing that work forward in, in our future. And then, on finance, we have a, a pretty big agenda next week, and Tom reminded me we've only got ninety minutes, so some of the stuff may not, you know, may not make it all the way through, but we, we want to try to revisit our, our quarterly review of, of our financial performance, you know, essentially our, our revenue versus, or versus expenditures, our, what our balance sheet looks like in terms of our assets, including our capital plan commitments. So, we're going to review fiscal year 2019, and fiscal year 2020 Q1 financials. These are unaudited, but I want to appreciate, or thank Ruth Porter, and the finance team, and Tom, for, you know, helping us to get on track, and to start to look at, at where we are versus, you know, our obligations in terms of financial policies. You know, we'll also be looking at financial metrics, and take, and having an update on the public safety building, and also talking about, you know, our, our assets, particularly as they relate to town property. Is there some opportunity there? You know, what, what does it look like in terms of town-owned property, and is that a potential source for potential liquidation, you know, and creating, rebuilding our, our unrestricted funds? And finally, we're going to talk at some point about, there's a, an issue developing in terms of bus stops, and people, you know, where they're going to be picked up, these involves particularly newly-developed communities, students apparently are required, or to walk up to a quarter of a mile to a bus stop, and there's a, a big debate about public versus private roads, and where the buses are going to go and pick people up. So, we're going to have a conversation about that at some point. So, it's, it's on the airwaves, so I'm assuming it's probably not going to wait for us, but I just wanted to alert everybody to that, so.
Thank you. Counsel Mansory, for example?
Sure. Hearing Counsel Hamel mention bus stops, we've got, we've got our own problems, I'm not sure if I want to weigh into school board policy regarding where, where bus stops are, but we shall see. A couple of quick updates. I'm mindful of the fact that Counsel Foley's time on this council is limited, and I think there's still an ongoing bet as to the adjournment time, so.
It's okay, I'm going to win tonight, so you can take your time.
Public safety building, pleased to report today, final paving went down on the entire project. You know, we're, we expect to take occupancy in March or April, long before the asphalt plants are open, so they worked incredibly hard to get all of that work wrapped up this year, and they did a really phenomenal job. I've reported here in the past that we've had some challenges with a design issue on the exterior masonry. It's been sorted through. For those of you that are coming up Route One, you'll notice that facade is nearly to the peak, and they'll keep moving right around the building. At this point, though, we do expect there'll be some winter conditions that will be experienced, just with the lateness of the year. At this point, this is, that's not a town concern, that will be an issue the architect will have to assume. I'm pleased to report the, the design team, the build team, and the town team continues to work very collaboratively through all of this. Pleased also to report on the sale of the existing building, we did receive a really interesting offer that I actually provided a counter to late last week, and expect to perhaps get a, a counter back again tomorrow. So, I'm hopeful that I'll have a, finally, an offer that I'm comfortable bringing forward to you, and talking about how to move that project forward, or that, that building forward. The advance refunding, this council took action at your last meeting. Markets continue to change, our financial advisor continues to monitor that, not just daily, probably on an hourly basis. Things have slid a bit, but we still have two or three weeks before the bond sale, so we'll continue to monitor that. we'll continue to monitor that. And as we assured you, we're not going to, we presented you a potential amount of savings and a certain amount of refunding, if it doesn't make financial sense, we're not going to do it. So I'll advise you further as we know more, getting closer to that sell date. The candidates night for, for council, school board, and sanitary district candidates was held in these chambers, I want to thank Kevin Freeman for again giving his time to this community. We are replaying that on channel thirteen oh two, and that's twice daily, at ten A.M. and seven P.M. So folks that want to know more about, folks running for elected office can certainly tune in and find out.
Isn't it available also if they go on to the town site and go
Sure.
They watch it whenever they want to?
On demand, but we're putting it prime time at seven P.M. But I think it's, I was not in attendance, but I've heard that it was a
It was good.
Good opportunity for folks to learn more about these candidates, so. It was discussed earlier, we are fully underway with our recruitment process for a new assessor. That closing is scheduled to happen, I think it's Sunday this week, so we're really moving closer to that. We do all of our recruitment online now, so we're able to see certainly online applications, and even those that have begun but haven't yet completed. And I'm very encouraged with the, with the candidate pool. I, I can't say that our past searches have been so successful, so I'm very pleased, and I listen very intently to much of the conversation, I assure you, there'll be interview questions all around that. And lastly, two housekeeping things in the vein of affordable housing, the Avesta project, that's the Southgate project, has a grand opening scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-third at two P.M. Many of, a number of councillors were, were attending a private session, but this will be a, a public grand opening. And then the Habitat project on Carpenter Court, tomorrow night from five to seven, they'll be celebrating that project, and that's certainly a project near and dear to my heart, that was involved from its infancy to its completion, so I'll be very pleased to, to be there. I believe many of the residents who, who now occupy those homes will be part of that celebration too. And lastly, I'll be attending my annual conference, this is the International City Managers Group, just imagine how much fun three or four thousand city managers have getting together. But I'll be away Monday and Tuesday next week, back in the office on Wednesday. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. I guess council comments, we'll start down at the hearing of the table, Council Hamel?
Yeah, I, you know, it's funny, I was looking at the agenda, I mean, most people don't realize how much back and forth there is putting an agenda together. You know, the public, I'm sure, has no idea. But, and I, I was kind of, you know, getting a little bit worked up about the agenda, either stuff on there that shouldn't be there, or there's stuff that should be on there that's not there, but we got here and we kind of worked through it, so I, you know, I just am very encouraged by, you know, how we were able to work our way through this as a group, and I, you know, regardless of what happens in November, you know, I hope, I hope we've started something that can continue along those lines. I, I am very impressed by the work that's been done by the ad hoc community center group, and, and, you know, I had my, my issues with the whole concept, but I've been really impressed with the quality of the people on that team, how quickly they're moving. I did the survey, I thought, this is incredible, the survey that, you know, it was really well done. So I, I'm encouraged by stuff like that, you know, we have a lot of issues in front of us, but we have a lot of talented people, and I think we have capable leadership, and I'm, I'm hopeful and optimistic, and I, you know, so anyway, it just, it was a good meeting tonight, I thought, so, thanks.
Council Kerry?
Yes, Tody, how many people have voted, more or less?
We have issued five hundred and eighty-two ballots with two hundred and eighty-three coming back.
So that's not very good.
No.
So the reason I ask is I just want to encourage everyone to vote, this is your opportunity to have a say in government. We have some bond issues on the ballot that are important, we have opportunities, we've got some great people running for council, and school board, and sanitary district, and whatever, so there are a lot of people in this world who would really like the opportunity to have a say in government and vote, so you owe it to them, and you owe it to people who have lost their lives, are protecting our, our democracy. I know it sounds kind of sappy or whatever, but you need to get out there and vote, it's your responsibility, so it's not hard to do, you can come into Town Hall when Town Hall's open, cast an absentee ballot, and the voting day is November fifth. The polls are open from seven in the morning till eight at night, so there's no excuse not to come and vote. And along those lines, well, just Mr. Hamel talking about like tonight and the agenda, I think people are under the mistaken impression that once you're on the council, we, we don't get along on the council, and I would like to put that to rest, because I think we get along really well. We, we don't always agree, and Council Hamel and I have talked about this, we don't always agree, but we're kind of like a big Irish family, you fight, 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 but when it comes down to getting things done, we work together, get them done, and we agree to disagree, and we actually, I think, enjoy each other's company for the most part, so, you know, I just want people to understand that, so. Anyway, that's it for me.
Council Foley?
Yep, I'll be brief, yep, early voting continues through the thirty-first. Okay, so I echo everything G. Marie said, don't need to say it again, get out and vote. I hate to see that we only get a big turnout when we have controversy, like, that, that's not the kind of town I want to live in, so get out and vote, it matters. It's getting dark earlier, I know everyone's noticing that, I'm particularly noticing it with bikers and pedestrians.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I always think this time of year is the toughest, so please wear something reflective, brighter colors if you can, if you're out there getting exercise in the evening hours, and drivers, please pay extra attention, and then this is just a silly little plea, I thought of it yesterday, and I thought, oh. So I hate the look of our communications tower, I think it's hideously ugly. I know it's a hundred percent necessary, but I'm wondering if we might do something for the holidays with it that would be kind of creative and fun, that would give it some character, and something that people, you know, whether it's lights, or a tree on top, or something, I would love you to explore what opportunities we could have to make it become a, become something fun in town rather than the eyesore, that, the necessary eyesore that it is. Thank you.
Council Johnson?
How much taxpayer dollars would it take to light that thing up?
Solar lights, oh, solar.
So I'm going to share two quick personal stories about my fellow councillors, because I like to do that. My fifth-grade daughter is in Mr. Marshall's class in Wentworth School, and she loves it. And Mr. Marshall requires the class to actually read the front page of the forecaster in the Scarborough leader, and then they get quizzed on it. And so my daughter was anxious the other night, because the forecaster doesn't come to the house, we had to jump in the car, go to Dunk Donuts, get the forecaster, and I said something like, you know, it'd be really cool if perhaps a town councillor could come talk to your, to your class, and she looks at me and goes, Don Hamel? So there, so there's that. My second thing, my second thing is I wanted to thank Councilor Clucci, he actually spoke at my entrepreneurship class at Shepherd's High School a couple of weeks ago, and I, he was incredibly informative, and the kids engaged in, with him quite well, and one of my teacher, my actual colleagues, went to high school with Councilor Clucci, and she says, well, who's coming to speak in class today? I said, oh, John Clutier. And she goes, John Clucci? So that answered my question, so if you've noticed, I actually have changed. And then, so I understood, we talked about Lewiston and all that, good stuff, so I, she gave me a good education. And she said, well, how do you know each other? I said, well, we were political rivals at one time, and now we're great friends, so we were never political rivals, actually. But anyways, those are my two stories I'd like to share with my fellow councillors.
Thanks. I actually had a great time talking to the kids at Shepherd's, they're really bright, ask great questions, way more attentive than I ever was in, in high school, so I think Paul does a good job with his class, keeping them focused and, and on the ball. I'll echo what has been said already, find a reason to vote, you know, some people vote because they're mad, some people are looking for hope, or they're angry or fearful, whatever it is that gets you up, or gets your friends up, vote, it's important, get to know the people who are running, I'm, I'm sure they're all good people if they're looking to do this, so, that's all I have. Enjoy your night, and if you have anything outside, put it in, because the wind's coming.
And I, and I guess I'll just conclude, I'll let everybody get out and vote, it's important, we've got some great candidates. It's hard sitting behind these desks, so those folks that are, that are running, listen to them and get to know them and, and vote, it's important, and with that, everybody be safe, I think it's going to be some mild weather, as we've just talked about, so. Thanks, everybody, and with that, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Everybody in favor? All right, thank you, everybody.
Hope you don't mind my Tommy Irish turn.